All right, we are out here. Good evening, everyone. This is a continuing or reconfiguration of our regular meeting of the Board of Education. And this bottom secretary, can you take attendance, please?
Yes, all board members are present except for Jason Politier and Mr. Edford.
Thank you. May we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's a beautiful spring evening and we have so much to celebrate. And the very first thing I want to celebrate and thank our entire community for is your strong support in the passage of our sinking fund last week.
Yay!
This is our first public opportunity to thank our community. It means a tremendous amount to us in over the years what we can be able to put into our general fund because this is only going into facilities and it really makes a tremendous difference for our students. So, thank you to everyone for your coming out and supporting our sinking fund. Thank you so much. That's number one.
Number one.
Secondly, since we weren't here last week, I didn't have a chance to say thank you to all of our staff. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And from all of our board, because we can always say thank you, doesn't matter what week it is, they make such a difference for in the lives of every child in our district every single day. Thank you from all of us, to all of you for what you do for our children all the time. That's all about what we're here for. And so, they are, they make all the difference for our children. I just want to bring up a couple of things that are going on this week. So, on Tuesday night, there was the grand opening of the Art from the Hills at the Bloomfield Township Library. And if you haven't had a chance to go over there to see it, it will be open for another 10 days, I believe. It's a wonderful exhibit of children's work from kindergarten through 12th grade, many different media. And it's just amazing to see how children can, each individual can take a task and create something so very different from one to the next. It's just an amazing thing to see how our, how minds can be, take the same direction and do such different things. The creativity among our kids is just wonderful to behold. Want to say another congratulations to West Hills Middle School who had a celebration this week also in celebration of their 50th anniversary. And that's another great landmark in our, in our district. So, great for all BHMS. And I want to bring up, there will be a Birmingham-Bloomfield Community Coalition fundraiser on this, May 19th, in Franklin, which is a fundraiser for the youth board. I don't know if you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, so on Saturday morning, there'll be a fundraising event. It'll be a 5K walk or run. It's going to be very, very close to here. It's going to be in Franklin. It's going to really, it's, the fundraiser is, it's about supporting the youth in our community of both Bloomfield and Birmingham. The weather forecast looks to be, hopefully looks to be sunny and good weather that day. You know, I will be personally running the 5K. Hopefully, I'll be able to finish, but you know, it shouldn't be a major problem. But, you know, you don't have to run it. You could just come out and walk, so it should be a marvelous day.
Terrific. Also, I just want to put out there for, to the community, there will be an election next November for Board of Education. And we will be offering a sort of question and answer. Rob Glass and I will offer June 26 at, I think we said 7:00 or 6:30?
I will look it up.
You know, just for an hour or so, just to sort of give, 7:00, yeah, that's what I thought, 7 o'clock, that we can just, you know, give sort of some basics of what it is like to be on the Board of Education, what's, what's the time and commitment, et cetera, et cetera. So, if you are interested or know anybody who might be interested in running for the Board, that would be a great opportunity for you to get to, to come out and, and learn about what we, what we're all about here. Last night, there was a great showing of the movie Angst at the, at the high school. We had about 80 to 100 folks who came out to view the movie, which was presented with Bloomfield Youth Guidance. We had a great panel of folks who fielded questions after the movie and really it was a very lively discussion. We all live in a, in an intense world climate these days and it, it plays out not only for adults, but definitely with all of the post-partordment sentiment. We are all concerned about mental health of all of our kids. And it will take all of us being mindful and thinking about how we can help all of our kids to have conversation and how we can help. So, that was a great opportunity. I think that's all I've got with Dr. Glass.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to just begin by reminding everybody, some, some who may be watching may not be aware that we're very sad that we have recently lost our state school superintendent, Brian Wiston. Brian was a champion for public education for his entire career in several different roles and a real, a real believer in all students. And he, he expressed that in his roles and in his leadership throughout his entire life and career. And we're going to miss him terribly. He led this state wonderfully as state superintendent. He championed the, the plan to make Michigan a top 10 education state in the next 10 years and that plan remains in place and is being led on an interim basis now by Sheila Ellis, who will be, who was the deputy superintendent and is now the interim state school superintendent. She's a terrific leader and is going to do a terrific job. But I'm wondering if, you know, I had the opportunity to, to go, you know, to the memorial for Brian and it was very well attended and it was a, you know, a memorial befitting all that he has done. And I'm wondering if we could just take a moment, for a moment of silence to remember Brian and think of his family. Thank you. Another important matter here that I need to talk about and it's all over our website and in the media now, we did have a data breach that occurred. We had some of our students who, a couple of our students who gained unauthorized access into our student information data system. And once in there, explored the system and changed grades for approximately 20 individual students. And that was discovered several weeks ago by us and as we investigated, learned more, we were able to target who it was. And that's, that those students are being held accountable through our student code of conduct. Our main focus right now, with the help of our forensic investigators, we were able to find the vulnerability, secure the system, isolate the incidents, notify the people affected, and notify the larger community so that they have all the information they need to know what to do next and, you know, what the extent of effect may have been for it, for them as an individual. If you go to our website, www.bloomfield.org, you will see a notice right on the front. There's a video, there's an extensive Q and A, there are resources. Tomorrow, all passwords in that system will be reset. So, it's important that you know that and you know how to do that and know what to expect. All of the grades that were changed are easily, easily able to be identified what they were originally and then have them reset. So, that process will be going on. The investigation is continuing because while we have a very full picture of what has occurred, we don't know every single detail. There are millions of lines of code that the forensic investigators and our IT team will continue to go through. And as they go through that, we may learn some additional things that we don't currently know. But we feel very confident that we know, we know the essence of what has occurred. And so, I think I'll leave it at that. I just want to make sure that I take this opportunity to let the public know if you haven't heard of what's occurred and where you can go to get resources. And as always, our primary emphasis and our primary mission is to have every, have our students be safe and secure, have our data be safe and secure, of course, as part of that. And we, we feel we've accomplished that. We're saddened that this occurred and I'm personally embarrassed that this occurred. But nonetheless, we feel confident that we know the extent of it and we're on the right course. Thank you all for your patience and consideration during this time. Also want to highlight some brilliant work that we just got to hear in room D right behind us. I want to thank our learning services team and particularly our, our team that, our literacy learning team that has really performed a comprehensive needs assessment about all of our literacy programs in the elementary grades, has gone through a beautiful process, come up with some findings and some recommendations going forward. And it is one of the most thorough undertakings around this that I've ever seen. I'm very proud of the kind of educators that we have who will take that on, get into over 80% of our classrooms and observe and make thoughtful recommendations based on teacher input, teacher data, and observational data. It's really great. So, I want to thank them and let you know that that'll be guiding our steps forward and our board got to hear that. And I think it was well received one and all. So, hats off to our learning services group. Amazing work. Also want to give kudos to Tina Kostick, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. She was on a panel this week with, among others, Roger Curtis, who is the Talent and Education Development Executive Director for the State of Michigan, really working on how we work together with schools and businesses to produce students who can contribute to our workforce and make Michigan a very attractive state with a robust talent pool. And Tina was really great on that panel. I tweeted that out and I'm very proud that, just to see her sitting up there adding to that dialogue at such a high level, it was great. We've just got some great people here. And we had a great DARE meeting last week. DARE stands for Diversity, Academic Equity, and Race Relations. We meet every month. Our next meeting is June 18th. We had a good meeting this month and our last meeting for this school year will be on June 18th, 6:30, right here in this room. I want to thank the Muslim Unity Center for hosting an annual dinner at, at the center and bringing together the community around common issues, common issues for all of us and keeping that community connected and this going. There were members of West Bloomfield Township, Bloomfield Township, Bloomfield Hills and others there and just, it was a great gathering. And then I also want to thank the Congregational Church of Birmingham for bringing together an interfaith group around the School Finance Research Collaborative. This is a very important group that is exploring what the cost is to educate all Michigan students, the per child, per circumstance cost to educate a child to our high standards in our state. And it's really important data and information, which I won't go into at this time into depth. But I will say I appreciate our community partners, Oakland Schools, our clergy, our faith communities, our educational communities, leaders of all kinds coming together and learning more about this work so that when campaign time comes, we can ask some key questions of those running for office. Do they know about this? What do they think about this? What is their position around this? And what are their ideas around school finance? Because it is a critical component of having all students be able to achieve. It isn't the answer, but it is a critical component of the answer and knowledge is, is power. And this is a well-done study that really covers all the bases. So, if you have any questions, this is called the School Finance Research Collaborative. If you just Google that, you'll get to a website that has all kinds of information, very short abbreviated videos that will really help bring home the essence of that study and what the implications of that study would be for Michigan potentially.
Rob, the website is fundmyschools.org.
Okay, thank you. Fundmyschools.org. Thank you, Howard. Our forensics team, state champions, as we, I think we talked about before at our last board meeting, however, they had their banquet last night. Mr. Cullen was there. I had the chance to be there. It was wonderful. Our students are just incredible. I want to thank our, our forensics team for inviting me to that banquet and had that opportunity. I know while Cynthia and others were at Angst, you know, I was over there and really enjoyed getting a window into these talented high school students of ours. Next week, we have a graduation, diploma ceremony, I should say, for the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program students at the high school. And it is Tuesday. I'm looking forward to that. I'm very proud of our International Baccalaureate Diploma Program students. And Senior Honors Night next Thursday, this Thursday coming up. So, that's another great event that we're looking forward to. And our model students will be having their ceremony, our Model Center students having their ceremony on the 30th of this month. One more thing and then I'll throw it over to Mr. Cullen for some exciting news. But we are currently in the season of our 2018 survey. This is something we'd like everyone in the community and in the school system to take. It is at our website, www.bloomfield.org/2018survey, 2018 survey. And if you go there, it can be a lengthy survey. It only, it tries to branch you to only the areas that would be most relevant based on whether you're a resident or whether you're a student or whether you're a staff member. But there are a lot of questions in there that we use to assess our culture, how well you think we're doing with your, with your students, how well you think, you think we're doing as a district in specific areas. And we use this data as part of our improvement, continuous improvement process for the district is very important. If you get in that survey, it's been highlighted to me that some people get in and can't finish because of time. They think, oh, this might take five minutes and it takes 10 or 15. So, it's okay. Just stop where you are. You can, and when you log back in again, it'll take you right to where you left off. That's a really important feature so you don't quit. I've found that some people quit early and we'd like you to get through every item on that survey. And so, wanted to make that available to you. And Mr. Cullen was just somewhere right before the meeting and I thought maybe he'd like to share something with you.
Sure, thanks, Rob. So, yes, I didn't get this tongue-tanned, suntanned from just hanging out outside of Doyle. Today, our girls tennis team, who's ranked third in the state, set history today by not only winning their fourth straight regional, but they won remarkably all 24 matches, going 24-0. That has never been done in the history of Oakland County and the region.
Wow.
So, that just happened probably like an hour and a half ago. And also, in addition to doing that, making history, their coach, Chris Dobson, won Coach of the Year award. So, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the district and the community, congratulations to all the members of the girls tennis team for this remarkable achievement.
Wow.
That's fabulous. Thank you for sharing that. All right, then I think it's time for us to move on into our consent agenda. Jackie?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, study session of May 3rd, 2018. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of May 3rd, 2018. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve HR actions.
Report.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a special report this evening.
We do, and I don't know, Mrs. Schumber would like to, to take a moment and introduce our presenters. I see her there and I thought, she's there, let's put her on the spot. Let's go right ahead.
I am so pleased to, to introduce two of our finest speech pathologists in the district. Mallory Frank. Mallory is at Conant and she's also covering Way at the moment. And we have Amy Goldman, who's our Speech Path Department Head. And they're going to talk to you about some professional learning that they have focused on all year long. And they are very proud of their work and it will continue into next year. So, without further ado.
Thanks. Okay. Oh, there you go. I don't know how to get rid of the other thing. Just, there we go. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
I'm Mallory Frank. As Pam said, I'm at Conant and currently covering, I'm sure you already know that, Way. I also wanted to mention that we are two of 10 total speech pathologists in the district, three at specialized programs, DHH and Wing Lake. And then seven of us are within the general public.
Okay, and I'm Amy Goldman and I am at West Hills full-time. So, and we're gonna go through. So, what we did here was we put up the Bloomfield Hills District Vision. And then we worked part of this year kind of writing our own vision for what we wanted to accomplish. And that goes along with the District Bloomfield Hills Vision. So, we want to use a systematic approach to work with families, educators, and students to develop the communication, speech, and language skills that facilitate student engagement and achievement of the academic and social performance standards of school. Our speech and language pathologists value interprofessional collaboration to provide effective prevention, assessment, intervention, program design, data collection, and analysis, and compliance activities.
So, as an SLP, which we like to refer to ourselves because most of our children can't pronounce our whole title, we focus mostly on articulation, fluency, or stuttering of the speech voice. And primarily, and what we've done, work with Oakland Schools this year is really focusing on our language development in our students and what that means for them.
Okay, so, what do we mean by language? Because that's really been our focus. So, speech and language pathologists, language encompasses listening, speaking, reading, and writing, literacy. We want our students to be effective overall communicators. And that involves more than just special education students. We want every student who leaves this district to be able to be effective overall communicators. And even if a student isn't in special education, sometimes those communication skills can be affected. So, we really work with the school and teachers and everybody as a whole to teach kids to be overall effective communicators.
So, the relevance of our field and being tied to the schools and the educational aspect is that communication skills are the underlying, they're the skills that underlie our standards and our teaching practices. So, without the communication skills, some of the other academic skills can't follow. Our background knowledge through education is really valuable for knowing the tools and resources that encourage tier-two vocabulary development, tier-three vocabulary development, the academic language that is necessary to progress as you move through your academic career. And developing reading interventions with our teachers at the lower elementary level, things like that, all encompassing the effective communicator that we want to graduate from our school district.
And that brings in that third grade, you know, essential reading as well. So, across Oakland County, across Michigan and Oakland County, speech and language impairment is the second most common special education eligibility behind specific learning disability. So, there's a lot of kiddos in our district who are affected by this. It's also one of the most common childhood disorders affecting 7% of children nationally. Kids with speech and language disorders are six to eight times more likely to have a learning disability that affects their school success.
What you'll see presented here is a graph of 25 speech pathologists throughout Oakland County and what they spend their day doing, or their week, I should say. It's weekly hours, so you'll notice it's just under about 50 hours a week. And the majority of our time is spent in direct service with children. We do spend a lot of time on compliance activities such as IP paperwork and program development. But we also are now, and as Bloomfield Hills staff, are trying to shift our focus into working more in that data collection and analysis and the instructional decision-making that happens throughout, as Amy said, with their third-grade reading bill, our skills and knowledge is very valuable in how we get to children, we get children to be reading successfully in third grade.
So, this graph shows a sample of Oakland County speech therapists in the areas of need that we support. Over 50% of our workloads are devoted to students who have severe language impairments. It looks a lot different from what it used to look like when we were thought of speech correctionists and just working on kids with Rs. and Ss.'s. That still is a myth, that a lot of teachers think that's just what we do. And that's not really the truth anymore. The work, through the work that our speech and language pathologists did with Oakland Schools this year, we were able to increase the support that we now provide to our most severe language impaired kids without adding any staff to our department. We have now been able to increase this work that we do.
And as our school board, we just wanted to highlight a couple of our accomplishments this year. We have been able to increase the time spent with our most needy students without increasing staff. We have been consistently throughout the professional development, working with Oakland Schools consultant to transition our model from a workload approach model to a caseload approach model. And we're hopeful that in the fall, we'll be implementing a kindergarten-wide screening procedure to help understand oral language development.
And these are just some resources that we've used to help our research. And then if there were any questions. But we will be continuing this project throughout next year, using our professional development time as well. So, it's been very useful. So, thank you for the opportunity.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Anybody else? So, I wonder, how much you work with our English language learners?
We certainly have many of them that we do work with. So, that's another area of research that we've done because it's always hard to draw the line between how much of it is their lack of English language and how much of it is actually maybe a language impairment. So, that's been a big area of research and a learning curve for us. And we continue to learn and be trained in that as well.
And assist teachers in understanding a difference versus a disability.
And the other question I had, so another piece of, of communication that, I don't know how much is innate and how much is, is taught, is eye communication. And I wonder how much eye contact is part of helping kids in what you do?
Absolutely. Social use of language is embedded throughout Common Core, which includes conversational skills and the cultural expectations we have within our school, which include eye contact and turn-taking, initiating conversation, things like that. So, we do a lot of work with teachers to help them understand what to expect from students, how to expect that to develop, and also, we do work with students on developing those skills too.
Other questions on the board?
Just off for a comment. My mother has worked in your field for 50 years.
Yeah, I've worked with her.
Taught in Bloomfield Schools for 30 years and have a tremendous appreciation for what you do and thank you very much for everything that you do for the students and for the district.
Thank you for taking the time.
So, I'm just curious, so, for, we have, as a society, we know that we have an increasing number of students who are somewhere in the autism spectrum disorder. And I wonder if, if some of the kids that you are trying to help come within that, that spectrum?
Many, many.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's been a growing number. As I've been in this field, the number has grown and grown. So, and many of them are within our general education students as well as within a lot of the classrooms that we have here in Bloomfield Hills. So...
What's unique about our position is that we, within, under the special education umbrella, we can be primary case coordinators for children who qualify under speech and language impairment. However, there are 13 areas of eligibility and we often service children under every area of eligibility, including speech and language impairment. So, autism spectrum disorders is one of those areas. And in order to qualify under that area, you have to have a communication impairment. So, we oftentimes are either involved in that case from a consultative basis or providing direct service.
Okay, thank you. So important. Anybody else? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's great. Okay, and next we move on into general discussion. And I just have a quick report from the Finance Facilities and Legal Affairs Committee. We met last week and we just had a couple of items on our, on our agenda that evening. Morning, we were, food services update. So, we had folks from Aramark, Mary Ann Romsec and David Palmer came and sort of gave us an update on our food services program. They shared that we now have fresh fruit and vegetable stations at all And they commented that our high school food operations really operates like a college, which is kind of what we intended. So that's pretty, pretty satisfying, I would say. Really happens like a college campus with all the different serveries and how they operate. So that's exciting. She says that, that they really appreciate that they have students who work with food services team, and they've hired a couple of our students this year. And for next year, they are planning to expand working with, at the farm, with our students, and also trying to use some of the vegetables that are being grown at the farm. And they are going to be working with middle schools to inform students about what, what is in a lunch, and furthering healthy nutritional knowledge. So I think that's a great way, a wonderful partnership that we can have with our food service providers, that I think that was a really helpful information we, and we, you know, as they're continuing to look at the numbers for the year, we don't have the year-end numbers yet, but it looks like they're going to be in pretty good shape with us. We also had a custodial update from Brian Goby, and our current outsourced company contract will be ending on June 15th, and then we will be transitioning to a new company starting the very next day, but they're going to be collaborating well, and I think it's going to be a fine transition. So that was a key issues that we discussed at FFLA this week. Anybody have any other things to add to that? Okay, then we just, the next is our public comment, and I have one card here from Rosemary Bayer.
Rosemary.
Please come on up.
Speaking as the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the board, to introduce myself. I am Rosemary Bayer. I'm running for the Michigan State Senate, and I came here today because the top of my priority list is always education. It always has been, and it always will be. I don't think we can do anything else. We cannot support sustainable growth or any kind of development in the economy at large, in our communities, without a solid platform of quality education. So you all are a great example of what can be done with the limitations that we have, but we also have the opportunity to do more, and so I hope to be a part of that. I am the only Democratic candidate in this district, so this is District 12, and it runs from Beverly Hills and Bingham and Franklin and Bloomfield to Pontiac and Auburn Hills and Keego and Sylvan to Lake Orion and Oxford and Addison and Oakland and Clarkston and Independence. So it's kind of a broad swath, but I had the opportunity to live in the northern part of the district and now the southern part, and it's great to get to know more people here, so I'm delighted to be a part of this, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you all in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We have one item of board business this evening, and it is the designation of an elector and selection of candidates for the six-year terms on the Oakland Intermediate School District Board of Education. I have a motion, please.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education designate Board Member Cynthia Vanoyen as its representative to serve on the 2018 electoral body of the Oakland Schools Board of Education. I further move that the Board authorize Board Member Cynthia Vanoyen to vote for candidates Dr. Teresa Rich and Mr. Mark Katz for the two positions on the Oakland School Board of Education for a term of six years.
Do I have support?
Support.
So, and earlier part of the evening, the board discussed this race, and it, the race for the two positions on the Oakland Intermediate School Board has, for two positions, for, who are, we have two candidates who are both incumbents. So it's a deep conversation that we had, but I can tell you that I do know both individuals pretty well. I've worked with Mark Katz for 20 years, and they are doing a fine job working at the intermediate school district, and so I will be one of the people who will be running the election, so I will be happy to bring our, our vote up there to cast, so nobody else has to go up there too. So with all, with that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I will say, enjoy your beautiful summer evening. It's, we deserve it, it's been a long winter. Thank you very much.